Chair Randall, we are live. You are ready to begin the meeting when you are.
So this is new and different. I will say that before I start anything else, I'll say that I miss all of my Northern Virginia colleagues. You guys look amazing on your little cameras and your little boxes, but I cannot wait to see you all again. I'm going to call the row of who I believe is on the phone right now of authority members. If anybody else is on the phone, please let me, well, on the phone, on the call, on the Zoom, whatever we're doing tonight, let me know. So I'll tell you who I have right now. I have Mayor Parrish, Chair Wheeler, Board Member Crystal, Chairman McKay, Councilmember Snyder, Mayor Myers, Mayor Wood. Oh, hey Derek. Mayor Rischel's in the room with me. Ms. Hines, I hear, is on the phone with me. Mr., I don't know whose name that is, K O L B?
Cole.
Oh, Mr. Cole. And welcome to Delegate Danica Rome, who is our newest MBTA member. Have I missed anybody who is with us? Any authority member? Who is it? Todd from DRPT, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
You are there. How are you doing? I'm sorry to miss you. Did I miss anybody else? Okay. Well, I want to make sure everybody remembers that we're being recorded. So don't, you know, burp or anything like that because if you do, everyone's going to hear it. So whatever you do or say, it's going out to everybody. There is a resolution I need to read before we start the meeting. This resolution does not require a vote, is not an action item. So I will read the resolution. Northern Virginia Transportation Authority Resolution Finding Need to Conduct May 14 Public Hearing Electronically. Whereas on March 12, 2020, the Governor of Virginia declared a state of emergency in Virginia in response to the spread of the novel virus, or COVID-19, a communicable disease of public health threat so declared by the State Health Commissioner on February 7, 2020, COVID-19. And whereas, in subsequent executive orders, particularly Executive Order Number 53 and 55 as amended, the Governor of Virginia, among other measures designed to ensure safe physical distancing between individuals, prohibited public and private in-person gatherings of 10 or more individuals, and ordered all individuals in Virginia to remain at their place of residence with limited exceptions to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19 and prevent its spread. And whereas, the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority finds that it has a responsibility to demonstrate to the public through the authority's conduct the importance of maintaining proper physical distance from the others and to avoid gathering in public where the risk of infections are highest, and to take measures that promote physical distancing in order to protect the health and mitigate the impacts and spread of COVID-19, including, among others, conducting meetings electronically whenever possible. And whereas, on April 22, 2020, the Virginia General Assembly adopted and the governor signed Budget Bill amendments to HB 29 that expressly authorized any public body, including state level, state, local, or regional bodies, to meet via electronic communication means without a quorum of the body physically assembled at one location when the governor has to declare a state of emergency, provided that, one, the nature of the declared emergency makes it impractical or unsafe for the public body to assemble in a single location; two, the purpose of the meeting is to discuss or transact the business statutory required, statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the public body and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities, among other provisions. And whereas, who wrote this? And whereas, member jurisdictions of the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority have adopted continuity of government ordinances pursuant to Virginia Code and Section Number 15.2-1413, which ordinances, among other provisions, contemplate regional bodies of which the locality is a member meeting, as a member, meeting electronically to transact business to ensure the continuity of government. And now, therefore be it resolved, that the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority hereby finds that conducting the public hearing by electronic means is authorized because of the nature of the declared emergency makes it both impractical and unsafe for the authority to assemble in a single location on May 14, 2020, to conduct the public hearing on May 14, 2020, and be it further resolved, that the authority hereby finds that conducting the public hearing by electronic means is authorized because the public hearing is statutorily required or necessary to continue operation of the authority and the discharge of authority's lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities, and be it further resolved, that the May 14, 2020 public hearing conducted by the authority is encompassed within the continuity of operations ordinance adopted by member localities of the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority to ensure the continued operation of the government during the disaster post for the public health emergency resulting from COVID-19. We are adjourned. All right. So we read that. That is, that was well done. Thank you. Really? My gosh. So Ann, you want to be chair next? Because Ellis said it's not going to be him. So this is the first ever livestream public hearing to take testimony by phone. In addition to person, we have one person in the room. Everybody else will be by phone. MBTA's first ever livestream public hearing. Access Facebook Live from the authority's webpage. We are conducting the public hearing using technology with which we have limited experience. Please bear with us if you experience any interruptions. MBA staff are all involved, some in the room, some in other offices or elsewhere in the building, some online. A recording of the livestream will be posted on the authority's webpage as soon as it is possible. I do want to say that these, this is, these are, this is new and this is hard. And MBTA staff is not that large. And for them to be able to put together both the public hearing and the meeting is pretty incredible. And so I want to compliment and thank the staff for working so hard to make sure that we can hear from the public. It's very, very important. We're now going to have the roll call. Well, I've already got that. Is there anybody else who's gotten the line since I last talked to everybody? Okay.
Sorry, Emily. Justin Wilson.
Hi, Justin. How are you?
Hey, how are you? Sorry, Emily.
I'm well. Thank you and welcome. Okay. Authority members, I'm going to remind you to keep, oh, this back sound, but I'm too close to my own, so. I'm going to remind you all to keep your lines muted, not on hold. And I want to welcome all the citizens in person or calling in and other staff and citizens and other elected officials who are following the web stream. We will hear testimony from in-person citizens not far from now, approximately a couple of minutes from now, followed by testimony by phone. Expected to commence, well, probably in the next five minutes or so. We anticipate the regular authority meeting will begin earlier than 9:00 PM, which is a tragedy. Before hearing testimony, we invite Monica Backman to make a brief presentation on the authority's six-year program process. Before I do that, you say one other thing.
I have, if you are speaking and you are not.
In the room, and that's only one gentleman. I'm going to ask you to set your own timers to three minutes each. I'm going to ask you to do that because once you get speaking, I'll have a timer set. But I don't really want to interrupt you to tell you how much time you have because that interrupts the flow. And so set your own timer. I will stop you when you're finished. I will absolutely do that. But I don't want to stop your flow. So if you're on the phone and you're going to speak, please set your timer so you can do that, so you can follow your own time. I'm now going to pass it over to Monica Backman for a presentation.
Thank you, Chair Wheeler. Oh, Chair Randall.
Yeah, that's okay.
It happens. So thank you, everyone. I have a brief presentation regarding the six-year program update and how we got to this evening's public hearing. This presentation will be brief because we do want to optimize the time available for the citizen who is here in person and for those who will be calling in this evening. Next slide. So the authority has two primary responsibilities. We are to develop and update the long-range transportation plan for Northern Virginia. Our current long-range transportation plan, which is entitled "Transaction", was adopted on October 17, 2017. Now, this is critical because HB 2313, which is the authority's funding bill, the bill that provided us the funding to advance a lot of these regional multimodal projects, requires that any project that the authority funds must be contained in its long-range transportation plan. And for many years before the funding bill, we would do the long-range plan, but we didn't have the funds to implement. Now, our second priority, now that we do have funding to implement these projects, is to prioritize and fund regional transportation projects. So we are in the process of updating our inaugural six-year program, which was the FY 2018 to 2023 six-year program, which was adopted in June of 2018. We anticipate doing our six-year program updates biannually, every two years. I should note that the authority has previously adopted other funding programs. We have four that we've adopted to date. We had our FY 14 program, the FY 1516 program, the FY 17 program, and of course, the inaugural six-year program that I just spoke to. I hope this slide isn't too confusing, but it gives you an overview of the MBTA process and how we arrived to the funding. It all starts with planning. And as I note, previous, on the previous slides, we have the regional transportation plans. We coordinate with the jurisdiction and agencies regarding their plans. And then we have a robust evaluation process, which has about 14 performance measures. Some of these performance measures are listed in our enabling legislation and others are in our transportation funding bill. However, all of these are combined into "Transaction" to help us do our technical evaluation. Then we get to the programming. What we do to develop and populate our six-year programs, the authority issues a call for regional transportation projects. When we have this call, as I stated previously, we have to make sure that every project that's being submitted for funding consideration is in our long-range transportation plan. We also have to do qualitative considerations. And what that means is, the projects that we're looking at, we want to make sure that we achieve geographic and modal balance. We don't want to overly populate investments in one particular part of the region. And we want to make sure that the investments that we fund are not of a single mode. Because what we understand here at the MBTA is that there is no single mode solution to the transportation woes here in Northern Virginia. As you'll see, the congestion reduction relative to cost, that is critically important. The transportation funding bill, HB 2313, requires that the authority gives priority to, and that priority to is very important, projects that have the greatest level of congestion reduction relative to cost. So we marry the technical data with some of the qualitative considerations and of course, the input that we hear and receive from the public. And then we develop a draft plan. The last column, we will see, is the funding. Cost-sharing opportunities is very important to the authority. It's difficult for us because, as everyone knows, we have limited resources, as does the Commonwealth, as does the localities and agencies. So cost-sharing is very important. Can projects provide other funding sources to help advance the projects? These project funding sources, other sources could be local, state, federal, or even the 30% local distribution revenues that comes from the authority. Next slide. So this column in this slide here shows a summary of previous funding programs. And I won't speak to this in too much detail because I noted the previous funding programs. But the big takeaway from this is that to date, the authority has advanced just shy of $2 billion worth of projects. And I'd like to draw your attention to the very last column, where you see, where you will see the percentage of projects approved versus requested. And if I could draw your attention to the very last line, which is the fiscal year 2020 to 2025 program, which we're currently in the process for, we have an anticipated amount, or estimated amount of $522 million to populate this funding program. We received 41 applications that are currently being vetted through the process. If you, if you look at the number, 522 million, those 41 projects requested $1.4 billion. So we only have the revenues to fund 36% of the projects that are requesting funding. Summary of candidate projects. So get, if you look at these pie charts, you will see the 41 projects. And the pie chart on the very left side shows the number of applications. And as I stated, there were 41 applications. But I would like you to pay attention to the modal breakout of the applications. So you see the big blue, which is approximately half of the applications submitted, for roadway. But one thing I want to note about the roadway projects, it is very rare that a roadway project is the only mode is the road. Typically, we'll have a sidewalk or a trail as a part of the roadway project. And in one case, a roadway project also encompasses bus rapid transit. If you look at the pie chart in the middle, you will see the requested amount. As I stated previously, the request is $1.4 billion. And the pie chart in the middle shows the breakout of the request by mode. And so the $906 million is for roadway. You see metro rail, M V R E commuter rail, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, intersection and interchange projects, and of course, the bus rapid transit facility. On the last chart, I'd like to draw your attention. If you look at the number in red at the very end of the chart, the total project cost for every, all of the 41 projects that were submitted for funding consideration, and it's a big number. It is a big number. We're looking at $3.7 billion. That number is important because, as I stated, the authority has to give priority to the projects that provide the greatest level of congestion reduction relative to cost. When we do the congestion reduction relative to cost analysis, we do that on the total cost of the project, not the request of the authority. Because the true congestion reduction benefits received, the way we calculate it, is based on the total cost of the project. Some key components of the project selection process. In addition to the funding availability, our project selection process comprises eligibility review. So as I stated, the project has to be in "Transaction". That is what is required in the law. If your project is not in "Transaction", it is ineligible for 70% revenues. Then we require a resolution from the governing body. This is important because the authority, we have a staff of 12 here, we do not implement. So we need to make sure that when the project is being submitted, the project sponsor, the governing body is behind the project. In the event the project is funded, then that gives the authority a level of assurance that the project will definitely be implemented. And then, the projects must be located in Northern Virginia. This is required by law. Because the authority's revenues are raised here in Northern Virginia, the projects that we fund must be here in Northern Virginia. As I spoke to, the quantitative analysis, the congestion reduction relative to cost, there's also something called HB 599, which was a law passed back in 2012 that requires VDA and the authority to evaluate projects for their congestion-reducing abilities. We did incorporate this, this analysis into our long-range plan. And then, if you would see the item that says "new", long-term benefits. HB 2313 also requires that, over time, each locality gets their proportional share of revenues that the authority has received. So in 2014, in December of 2014, the authority did adopt principles for how we assess long-term benefits. So all of this is to say, the process is not one that is easy, but we make sure that it's fair and that we're doing our best for the region. Then we look at qualitative analysis. Is a project a continuation project? A continuation project is a project that the authority has previously awarded funds on. We look at the past performance of a project, the extent of committed external funding. Is there a funding gap? And then, project readiness. I'll stop and speak a little about project readiness. Project readiness is very important because, again, we have to give priority to the projects that provide the greatest level of congestion reduction relative to cost. If a project is ready, we will make sure, and we will realize the congestion-reducing benefits of that project a lot sooner than a project that takes a little longer to materialize and come to fruition. And again, supporting resolutions from other governing bodies. Because we fund regional transportation projects, a project could be located in Mountain County, but could also have the support from the Fairfax County Board. And that goes across the board. Because again, an accident or we had an incident, or if there's a delay in Alexandria, it could very well affect the community for those in Prince William County. And of course, public comment, public testimony. Our public comment period started in March, actually, March 13, and it will end on May 24 at 11:59 PM. Next slide. So regarding the next steps, as I just stated, the public comment period started March 13. We are having our public hearing tonight. Immediately upon the conclusion of the public hearing, the authority also has a business meeting. So of course, this makes for a little longer night for some of us. Well, and we will ask the authority to take action on the pay-go amount. That pay-go amount is the $522 million that we estimate that we'll have available for this six-year program update. And one thing I do want to note, even though the six-year program encompasses fiscal years '20 to '25, we're really picking up fiscal years '24 and '25. That's very important because the other fiscal years were part and approved as part of the inaugural six-year program. The public comment period ends May 24. And in June, MBTA staff will release recommendations incorporating public comment and the feedback. And we will also request feedback from the authority's two statutory committees, which is the Technical Advisory Committee, the Planning Coordination Advisory Committee as well. And then these recommendations are forwarded to the authority's Planning and Programming Committee. The Planning and Programming Committee makes the final funding recommendation to the full authority. It is also important to note that all decisions lie with the authority. And that leads us to where we hope we will be in a few months. July 9, the authority is scheduled to take action and adopt the six-year program update. I will not go into these next steps after the six-year program is adopted. I don't want to get ahead. But once your project is adopted, we will have a standard project agreement that we execute, and that really gets the project moving. Next slide. Thank you. And if you see on this last slide, there's all the ways to get in touch with the authority. We appreciate the comments that we've received to date because we have received quite a few. And bear with us regarding this call-in testimony because, as Chair Randall said, this is a first for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Backman. I appreciate it. Authority members, this is how I'm going to do this tonight. We're going to go on and do the public comment right now. For, after the public comment, if you have questions for anything that Monica, just, Ms. Backman just presented. And in fact, even as we go into the meeting tonight, I'm going to call on you all in the same order every time. If you have questions, let me know. If you don't have questions, I'll just pass you by. And that's fine. But it would be easier for me if I called on all of you in the same order so you just know that that's going to happen. The order would be Mayor Parrish, Chair Wheeler, Board Member Crystal, Chairman McKay, Mr. Snyder, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Wood, Ms. Rischel, Mr. Ms. Hines, Ms. Cole, Delegate Rome, and Mr. Wilson. Who I have on my sheet is Delegate Wilson. So let's just change that, Justin. So Mayor Wilson.
Oh, heck no. That's a fate worse than death right there.
Yeah, not over the past two weeks it hasn't been. So that's, yeah, so that's the order I will call, call on you. But I'll do that later on. Right now, we are going to go and start, we're going to go and start the testimony. We'll do the in-person testimony first, and then we will start with the phone testimony. Once again, I'm going to remind people on the phone to set your personal clocks for three minutes because I will stop you when you get to three minutes. And so just, just know that. So the, we have one gentleman in the room. We only have one person in the room, right? Mr. Singh? Is that correct?
I'm here.
Hello, sir. How are you? Thank you. You can come, you can go over there to the podium?
It is for the bike chair.
I have what you want to give us. Does Mr. Singh have a clock that he can see? So I can set a clock for him, too. No, no, I said a clock. Can he see his timer? I could, I could do that.
You're welcome to comment on it. But remember, I have an invisible visitor with me.
We're ready.
Stand here, okay. My name is Pete Singh, and I'm from the Dumfries area. I came to it, and I see the young man's picture in front of me. He's our leader, a mayor of the town of Dumfries. And what I'm here for, I'm not here to do his job. I'm here to educate you all, what do we need in Dumfries? And what brought me here today? Hopefully, in the next three minutes or so, I'll be able to finish that. Chair Person, you did an excellent job in educating me what the governor wants us to do. Monica, you did an excellent job in telling us what your plans are. And you will find that what I, as a citizen, is going to say is fits into your plan. Not going absurd here or there or there. It fits into the Northern Virginia plan. My particular focus today is to talk about Dumfries and Route 1 widely. Why is it necessary? Not because some trucker out of New York is on his way to Virginia Beach or to California, sorry, Florida, but it is necessary because we, the residents of Dumfries, have a bottleneck in Dumfries. You would wonder, what is this bottleneck all about? Well, the bottleneck started, you know, when? I just happened to read a few days ago that our town was chartered in the 1600s. And since then, Route 1 came into place. First, it was a track on which George Washington used to go and do business on. And today, I hit, I'm proud to say that I do business in Dumfries. And I'm seeking the help which George Washington did hundreds of years ago from this body like yours, which is elective body, is please help me build the road. Now, what is this road about? Yes, we all know Dumfries has Route 1. It passes through the center of the heart of town. And guess what? For years and years, since I have been there growing up in Dumfries, that VDA had bypassed us. And I'm going to document for you how they have bypassed us. If you take a minute, go to the last page, the page of my slide, and I'm going to use this documentation here, too. You will notice that Route 1 north is about, inside the town of Dumfries, it's about two miles. North of town of Dumfries, it's a few hundred miles. And south of town of Dumfries is a few, few hundred miles, all the way down to Florida. And guess what? Here in Northern Virginia, we have a bottleneck. And there is no doubt about it. I would urge you to have your traffic people who are sitting here to go and do a traffic. Please, don't do the traffic count this weekend because we are in a different environment. But you will notice that time is running out. Okay.
Everyone, please remember to set your clocks because I, I, I will, I will, I'm not going to warn you. So I'm going to, I will stop you when your time is up. But thank you, Mr. Singh. The first speaker we have on the list is Kelly Burke, Kelly, I mean, Mayor Burke. Mayor Kelly Burke would be followed by the Vice Mayor of Dumfries, Monae Nickerson, will be followed by the Councilwoman for Dumfries, Selona Miles, and then followed by the Councilmember of Falls Church, Larry Har. by the Councilmember of Falls Church, of Falls Church, Larry Hardy. And so we will start when we get all ready with Ms. Mayor Kelly Burke. Ms. Burke, can you hear us? Mayor Burke? She's calling. Okay. Oh, is that, is that how we're doing that? Okay. I see that.
Chair Randall, this is Keith Jasper making the call.
So this is the deal. If people don't answer, we're going to go to the next person and then we're.
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice.
And we're going to go to Monet Nickerson. We may want to get more than one line one at a time also. That also may speed things up a little bit. They did know to sit. Okay. Why am I echoing this much?
Good evening.
Ms. Nickerson, hi, this is Chair Randall from MBTA. Ms. Nickerson, can you hear us?
Ms. Nickerson, can you hear? This is Keith Jasper from MBTA.
Hi, thank you, I can hear you.
Okay, I'm, I, you, you're actually live on the WebEx.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
If you just go ahead and speak.
All right, I thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Monet Nickerson and I'm the Vice Mayor for the town of Dumfries. And my comment is coming to you as a representative for my constituents as well as a citizen who lives here and who is impacted on a daily basis by Route One. So this project, we all know, has been a long time in the making and building infrastructure in our town is a priority, which is essential to our growth. So we are the only area currently that has not had upgrades to Route One. Both to the north and south of the town of Dumfries have, have seen road expansion and it's finally our time. With a $5 million budget, however, we as a town are not able to do this on our own. So we need your help. Thank you for the help you've given us thus far. And I humbly request that you consider giving us the additional funding needed for us to get this project up and running so we can put it into reality and make Dumfries a destination. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, so our next speaker will be Councilwoman Miles from the town of Dumfries.
Hello?
Hello, Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Hi, this is Keith Jasper from MBTA.
Hi.
And you are live to speak to the authority. Please proceed.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you for calling me. Um, can everybody hear me?
I can hear you. Chair Randall, can you hear?
Yes, we can hear.
Okay, please, please go ahead.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I really appreciate y'all providing this avenue for us to provide comments as the public as you move forward with the six-year plan. I wanted to speak tonight on behalf of, in support of the funding for the town of Dumfries Route One winding project. I wanted to speak in behalf of this project because running Route One would really improve the quality of life for citizens of the town of Dumfries. And the main reason is because transit from I-95, when it gets overcrowded, it flows right into Route One and that goes right into the town. So what should be a 10 or 15-minute ride home goes turns into a 45-minute to an hour drive. And that's time people are late picking up kids from daycare, people are late getting home, starting their dinner. And it really has an adverse impact to their quality of life. Another positive effect that it will have for us if we have the funding to fund our project is that it will allow us to build up Main Street. So if we can widen Route One on the north side of Route One and have Main Street to develop, we could attract more local businesses, which would promote more people working from in, in the local area, which would again reduce traffic and improve quality of life for people in our region and attract local businesses and will be in support of local businesses. That is the gist of what I was saying. I know I have three minutes, I wanted to keep it short, but thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you, Chair Randall. Thank you, members of the board. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good one.
You too.
So can they hear me at all? The speakers? Okay. All right, so our next speaker will be Letty Hardy from Falls Church.
Oh, it's Letty.
Councilmember Letty, Letty Hardy, this is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. You're connected to the public hearing. Please go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, can you all hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to show them. Hi, my name is Letty Hardy from the city of Falls Church. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. So first of all, thank you to the MBTA for all your hard work in support of transportation projects. Clearly it's foundational to the region's economy and under, under current circumstances, I think it's important to even amplify more with our roads and transit and buses connecting our central workers and sidewalks and trails providing recreation and much-needed mental health. So I'm a member of the Falls Church City Council, but I'm speaking tonight as an individual citizen in support of two projects. First, which is the West Falls Church W-N-O-D connection and the downtown multimodal project in Falls Church, as they're personally important to me. I'm not representing all of council, although we have unanimously endorsed both projects under consideration by you all tonight. So I'm speaking as a runner and as parent of young kids and having a new multi-use path along Shreve Road, where unfortunately we actually had a pedestrian fatality last summer, will provide a much safer route for citizens of multiple jurisdictions. And not only do we have students and commuters from the city of Falls Church, but we also have Fairfax County Providence district neighborhoods that will be more able to safely travel from the W-N-O-D to the West Falls Church Metro Station and two schools. We're also going to be providing a safer corridor for pedestrian and bike traffic, which is going to be increasingly important as we look forward to commercial development at the corner of Haycock and Route Seven, and then further north at the UCA Virginia Tech Campus, and then West Falls Church Metro Station in the Drainsville District. And then moving on to the second project, the improvements in downtown Falls Church will really be important for our continued focus on multimodal transportation with safer crossings, curb extensions, increasing visibility will really enable all them safely travel on foot or bike, which will really complement the Capital Bike Share stations we welcomed to Falls Church last year. And of course, that all shifts mode away from cars and helps free up our congested roads that we really see in Northern Virginia. And ultimately, supporting kind of these key commercial areas are going to make it easier for people to get downtown to take care of essential business and one day shop and dine in person again. Even more important as we help our region with economic recovery when we're on the other side of this pandemic. So thank you again for your hard work and consideration. And I appreciate everyone's hard work.
Great, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Audrey Clement.
Hello, do you hear me?
Hi, Ms. Clement.
Yes.
Hi, this is Keith Jasper. I, I can hear you. If, if you've got some background noise, perhaps you could mute that. But the authority can hear you and please go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hello, hello. All right, my name is Audrey Clement. I'm from Arlington County. And I'm speaking on application number NOV022, transaction ID 72, applicant Nova Parks. Nova Parks wants $5.6 million to expand a two-mile stretch of the 12-foot wide W-N-O-D trail in Arlington to a maximum of 22 feet. A 12-foot bike trail, an eight-foot pedestrian trail, and a two-foot median. This is equivalent to building a two-lane city street in a fragile flood zone located in one of Arlington's few remaining natural areas. Nova Parks claims that the increased trail capacity will relieve overcrowding and promote access to regional activity centers like East Falls Church Metro. The shared use path level of service analysis performed by Tool Design for Nova Parks in 2019 demonstrates congestion on the northern end of the trail, but it also acknowledges that demand is flat. In fact, the increase in trail use has been so negligible that Tool didn't even bother forecasting future demand. This raises questions about the need to double trail capacity, especially since no alternative analysis or environmental assessment was done. Nova Parks insists that it couldn't perform further analysis until MBTA approved the project. But this puts the cart before the horse. How can MBTA make an informed decision about what to fund until it knows what is needed? Tool acknowledges in the attached field assessment summary that went with its original report that much of the trail lies in a flood zone. What if the environmental assessment that Nova Parks eventually produces demonstrates that paving over the remaining grassy buffer between the bike trail and four-mile run along a one-mile stretch of I-66 will in fact induce further erosion of an already eroded stream back? Does MBTA really believe that Nova Parks will scale back its plans and return the money saved to MBTA? If so, I have some real estate along four-mile run in Arlington County that I would like to show MBTA. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you.
Speaker is Bernard Byrne.
Hello?
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
Hi, this is Keith Jasper from MBTA.
Yes.
You are connected to the public hearing. The members of authority can hear you, even if you can't hear them. So please go ahead, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Bernard Byrne. I live in Arlington County. I testify in opposition to project number NOV002, Arlington W-N-O-D Trail enhancements. Please reject this needless and environmentally destructive project. The application requests $5.6 million. However, the applicant contains, the application contains no valid data that suggests that the project can reduce traffic congestion on nearby highways such as I-66, US 50, and US 29. The application contains a consultant's report that claims that the trail is congested more poorly during peak weekday commuting hours. In contrast, I have counted pedestrian and, and traffic at, at cyclists on the trail at the same hours during the past, during three separate weeks of, of this year. Although I obtained similar counts to that of the consultant, two uses per minute, I saw no congestion. Traffic flowed freely at all times. It appears the consultant biased its conclusions by selecting five count points that are near curves, hills, and a wood, and a wood-planted plank bridge. Further, I-66, which is next to the W-N-O-D trail, is rarely congested during peak hours except during construction. That is because tolls increase whenever rides, traffic slows. People avoid I-66 which tolls are high. Well, very few people use a W-N-O-D trail for transportation or commuting. Most use it for recreation because it is recreational trail even during peak hours. These people will not use highways instead of the trail. They lightly use four-mile run trail parallels the W-N-O-D trail. Most cyclists avoid it because it's, because of its up curves and hills. There's no need to pay for, to build a separate pedestrian path on, on the W-trail as, as the applicant proposes because another pedestrian path already duplicates this route. The project will just, will, will expand the paved W-trail to 22 feet. The rid W-N-O-D regional park is only 100 feet wide. The project will therefore destroy much of the park's natural areas and discourage visitors. The, the natural area contains Arlington's only large pollinator meadow habitat, which is essential for protecting insects that are rapidly disappearing. This is a unique environmental resource which the county cannot replace, or the W-N-O-D trail cannot replace it either. The project will destroy a meadow, a, a number of mature trees. It will also increase stormwater runoff into a nearby stream, four-mile run, which is in the designated research protection area under the Chesapeake Bay, the Chesapeake Bay Act. Please therefore do not fund this project. It has, it lacks justification. I am not sure how your, your own ranking procedure works, but it's probably, I suspect has not been validated when comparing a bike trail to the trail projects that have highways and, and public transit, transportation like Metro. It's, it's a different situation.
Mr. Byrne? So we really appreciate your comments and you can certainly send your comments via email to us as well, but your three minutes has expired.
For the present year, or the next year.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker will be Susan Land.
I've turned, I've terminated that call.
Okay, we're going to Connie Erickson. Kenzie, can you stop muting me?
That extension is not valid.
Okay, we're going to go to Alan Norton now.
Uh, no, that was my mistake.
Okay.
Hello, Ms. Erickson? This is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Hello?
Have you registered to speak to the authority at public hearing this evening?
I have.
You have, okay. You are connected to the public hearing. The authority members are on mute, but they can hear you. Please proceed, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Connie Erickson. I speak tonight regarding application NOV002, the proposed Arlington W-N-O-D Trail enhancement. I live in South Arlington County, 2504, I'm on the Board of Autobahn Society of Northern Virginia. And I speak to you this evening on behalf of Autobahn's more than 4,500 members throughout Northern Virginia. Our mission is to conserve and restore natural ecosystems focusing on birds, other wildlife and new habitats for the benefit of humanity and earth's biological diversity. Many Autobahn members are actively recognizing the environmental benefits of bike creating. However, they also recognize the importance of preserving natural beauty in Arlington's rare remaining unburied stream valleys and their associated wetlands and floodplains. We believe the proposed project essentially turns the trail into a street, not a park trail, and it hinges on most valuable resources. The project, project would cost us trees, shrubs, and meadows, and increased flooding and stream erosion, all of which damage the park, because all of which damage the park. erosion, all of which damage the park, because all of which damage the park's ecosystem and the resident and minority of wildlife support. We believe that Nova Parks has not justified this costly project. The alleged benefits of the proposal need to be weighed against environmental harm, and that weighing process should include a realistic objection of analysis of possible alternatives. Nova Parks needs to look not just at traffic counts, but at where those counts were taken, and whether there are alternatives to doubling the trail size that would provide increased flexibility where and when necessary with less environmental harm. For example, we know that the traffic counts in the tool assessment taken at locations where cyclists are likely to slow down, not because of fast speed traffic, but because of atypical trail conditions, that is near sharp turn in the trail and a woodplanked bridge. Perhaps trail enhancements would be appropriate at selected locations where the trail presents features that make congestion more likely, but only objective evaluation of alternatives can result in such a determination. We know also that some locations where the WOD trail or Forma Run Trail congestion, if it exists, might be mitigated by dividing pedestrian bike traffic between the two during specific peak times. Without an alternative analysis, Nova Parks has not made a convincing case that it needs to exonerate park space and the destroyed natural resources to create a bicycle superhighway. Autobahn encourages you to defer decision on this costly and potentially harmful project until an objective environmental alternatives assessment has been completed with appropriate public review. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erickson.
So we're going to Alan Norton.
Good evening, Alan Norton.
Good evening, Mr. Norton. This is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority. Thank you for registering to speak to the authority this evening. You are connected to the authority. They're on mute, but they can hear you. Please proceed. You have three minutes.
My name is Alan Norton. I live in Arlington County in the Bluemont Civic Association. The trail runs right through my association, Collins Springs to Wilson Boulevard, and right next to us, Wilson Boulevard, the Patrick Henry Bridge. I think it is a great idea myself. People in the area worry very much about getting hit in the back by bikers when they're out on the trail. The bikers, like some of my friends actually, are always worried of kids wandering across the street, along the trail. As I said, widening it is great. I commuted to Falls Church using the trail for several years. The traffic was light in the morning, though I always got passed several times. Coming back at five, it was always fairly heavy. The county would like to have lots of bike travel. Well, the W O N D trail and the Cusus Trail are the only east-west trail in the county. So whether the Parks Department likes it or not, that section of the W O N D that you're going to work on is a commuter rail road. It's as important for commuters as it is for park use. And I know that there are places you're going to have to cut down grass, which doesn't bother me. They're just weeds. There are areas like Long Forma Run, close to I-66, where you're going to have to be careful widening it. Candle levers appropriate with concrete underneath it. I would like it if while you're working on it, if you would cut down Castle Hill area. There's no reason for it to be so high, and there's plenty of room there between the security wall, the VDOT safety wall, and the hill itself cut straight down. That would be very nice. And really, that's all I have to say. As I said, it's a really good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. The next one is Tammy Lambert.
Hi, Ms. Lambert. This is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority. Thank you for giving testimony to the authority this evening. You are connected to the public hearing. The authority members are on mute, but they can hear you. If you could start by introducing yourself and your location, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for calling today and taking my testimony. I am Tammy Lambert. I live in Dumfries. I am just calling to ask the, ask NVTA to seriously consider funding the construction for the expansion of Route 1 town of Dumfries. As everyone knows, Route 1 is bisected through the town of Dumfries with northbound Route 1 on the alignment of the east side of the town and southbound Route 1 on a separate alignment also serving as Main Street for the town. So hopefully you can imagine, hopefully I was able to describe it, but you can imagine how congestion is really bad in that area. No other community in Princeville County has Route 1 dividing its town and isolating the traffic for its entire community six to seven days a week. Currently, we have about 50,000 vehicles that travel daily, excluding the pandemic, approximately 2.01 miles stretchway of Route 1. And the future studies show that it's going to be about 80,000 vehicles per day. And so if it can't support the 60,000, it's definitely not going to support the 80,000. So funding this construction will reduce congestion and improve safety and accessibility for drivers, bicyclists, and pedestrians. Reconstructing and widening the Freely Boulevard Bridge over Chronicle Creek Ang to minimize flooding impacts and increase capacity. So I ask the board to seriously consider funding the full construction of the expansion of Route 1 as it goes through the town of Dumfries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert.
Your next person is Douglas Stewart.
Hello?
Mr. Stewart, this is Keith Jasper.
Hi, Keith.
How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. You're, you are connected to the authority. They are on mute, but they can hear you. Please introduce yourself and give your location. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Douglas Stewart in Fairfax City, and I am speaking for the Virginia Sierra Club. We support expanded transportation options so that residents can walk, bicycle, and use transit for everyday trips. Focusing growth in transportation investments in pedestrian-friendly, transit-oriented communities is essential to mitigating traffic congestion, fostering economic development, and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. In 2018, the Sierra Club and several partners released a blueprint for better transportation in Northern Virginia. The blueprint recommends a discrete set of cost-effective transportation projects that expand transportation choices in all parts of the region. Our comments on the six-year plan update follow the recommendations in our blueprint. The projects we support are listed in the joint letter that Sierra Club and 15 partner organizations submitted to NVTA earlier this week. They include, but are not limited to, the following projects. North Woodbridge Mobility Improvement in Princeville. BRE Woodbridge Station Improvement in Princeville. Route 1 Bus Raptor Transit in Fairfax County. Frontier Drive Extension in Fairfax County. Roslyn Multimodal Network Improvement in Arlington. Duke Street Transitway in Alexandria. Regional Bike Sharing in Vienna. West Falls Church Access to Transit in City of Falls Church. And Old Lee Multimodal Improvement in City of Fairfax. And we have seven others in our letter that we recommend. And we recommend these projects because they facilitate pedestrian and bicycle access to transit, expand choices for bicycling, walking, and other clean transportation options, and also create a more redundant street network that creates more options for all transportation users. Looking beyond the six-year plan, we encourage the members of NVTA to find ways to incentivize submission of more projects like these in the next cycle, projects that enhance non-motorized safety and mobility. Specifically, we requested NVTA set benchmarks for 20% or more of localities' requested funding to be directed toward new infrastructure intended to improve safety of non-motorized road users and enhance mobility by means other than privately owned vehicles. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Keith.
You too. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
So it's my understanding we're going to go back, we're going to circle back and call back Mayor Kelly Burke of Leesburg, who was our first caller, our first speaker, rather. She wasn't on the line, so we're going to try her again. Is that correct, Mr. Jasper?
Yes, and following Mayor Burke, we'll go back to Susan Land as well.
All right. Thank you.
Hello, this is Kelly Burke.
Mayor Burke, good evening. This is Keith Jasper from NVTA.
Hi.
Hi. You are connected to the authority's public hearing. The authority members are on mute, but they can hear you. Please introduce yourself and your location, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, this is Mayor Kelly Burke, calling from the town of Leesburg, and I'm addressing the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority on the FY 2020 to 2025 six-year program. Good evening, Chair Randall and Vice Chair Parrish and members of the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority. I'm speaking tonight to provide comments on behalf of the town of Leesburg regarding NVTA's FY 2020 to 2025 six-year program. Thank you for offering the opportunity to provide comments remotely during your public hearing. On behalf of the Leesburg Town Council and the citizens we serve, we thank you for the opportunity to comment on the inclusion of funding for the Route 15 Leesburg Bypass and Edwards Ferry Road Interchange Project in the six-year program. Leesburg sits at the intersection of two major commuter routes, Route 7, which runs east to west, and Route 15, which runs north to south. As a result, the Route 15 bypass around Leesburg carries more than 48,000 vehicles per day with serious congestion and delays during the peak hours. In conjunction with our state and regional partners, the town has been working towards removing all at-grade intersections and traffic signals along the bypass. The proposed interchange of 15 and Edwards Ferry Road will remove not one, but two signalized intersections, thus providing significant traffic congestion relief. In addition, the proposed interchange provides pedestrian access across the Route 15 bypass linking commercial and residential areas of the town. We are very appreciative of the $2 million in the past NVTA has funded for the interchange justification report, which has been completed and approved by VDOT, FHWA, and the Leesburg Town Council. The next step will be to design a right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation estimated to be $12 million. This amount is the funding we need to keep this project moving forward. Total project costs, including constructions, are estimated at $116 million. We submitted a request to VDOT for the smart-scale round tour funding that will be available FY '26, and if awarded, we anticipate using for construction. Your support for this important regional congestion relief project is greatly appreciated. Thank you again for allowing me to the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your dedication and commitment to our communities.
Thank you, Mayor Burke. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too.
We're going to go back to Susan Land. So we're going to bypass Ms. Land and go to Lisa Campbell.
Okay.
Hi, this is Lisa.
Hi, Ms. Campbell. This is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Hi, I'm ready to go.
You are connected to the public hearing. The authority members can hear you, but they're on mute, so you won't hear them. And please introduce yourself and your location, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Campbell. I am president of Bike Loudon, and I live in Loudon County. Thrills of the inclusion of parallel bicycle and pedestrian facilities and road projects, and I encourage NVTA to continue making safety a priority for bicyclists and pedestrians. Many cyclists want to commute to work and school for financial, health, and environmental reasons, but many bicyclists are frustrated. Safe, safe direct routes are still needed to connect to parallel multi-use trails, which are often left piecemeal and unconnected. Many areas in Northern Virginia come up short in direct routes. So first, we support project LEE008, Route 15 Bypass, and Edwards Ferry Road in Leesburg. We support this project. This is a very dangerous intersection, especially for pedestrians who aren't supposed to walk through, but they do anyway, and cyclists, of course. If funding is approved, please ensure a direct and safe route for bicyclists and pedestrians on Edwards Ferry Road across Route 15 Bypass. Many low-income residents in Leesburg work at the shopping centers and the outlet malls. Also, there needs to be a multi-use route parallel to Route 15 Bypass between the shopping centers of Costco and Target, Staples to Home Depot, and to the outlets. People in Leesburg want to use their bicycles or walk. In Loudon County, some multi-use trails curve off into neighborhoods as they reach important intersections. So please make sure the final design of this new intersection and surrounding areas are connected to other multi-use trails. The second project is LDN019, Evergreen Mills Widen at North Star to Stone Springs Boulevard. We support this project. If funding is approved, please ensure direct and safe multi-use trails complete for bicyclists and pedestrians. This will be a step and improvement for a direct link between the north and south end of Loudon County by way of multi-use trails, providing safe passage separate from cars. This route should enable bicyclists and pedestrians to connect from Stone Springs and South Riding all the way to the WOD Beach Trail through Brambleton and Ashburn. Please ensure multi-use trails connect. Thank you so much for this time, and I look forward to seeing what happens next. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
The next speaker is Tanya James. Speaker is Stuart Swartz, who we all know well.
Good evening Stuart, how are you?
Good evening Chair Randall and members of the Authority. I'm Stuart Schwartz, the Executive Director of the College for Smarter Growth. We are the leading nonprofit organization in the DC region addressing the interconnected issues of land use, transportation, housing, and the environment. We thank you, our elected officials and government staff for your public service, particularly during these extremely challenging times. Your service is truly deeply appreciated. You have at hand a joint letter from 16 Smart Road Conservation, Brandon, and Bike Fed advocacy nonprofits representing thousands of members across Northern Virginia. David Stewart of the Sierra Club has testified to that letter and the public that we support. CSG strongly endorses those comments. I wish to focus on big picture factors which should guide the project that you select and the planning that you do in the future. The crisis we are now facing stands in large part on the failure to believe in science, ignoring critical warnings about a real threat, and the failure to plan ahead to address that threat. The same has unfortunately applied to the threat of climate change, which will bring unprecedented problems including more pandemic flooding, drought, property damage, refugee movement, and security threats. Therefore, we urge you to adopt all of those transportation projects to support mixed-use, blockable, transitory communities and reduce vehicle miles traveled, vehicle trips, air pollution, and greenhouse gas emissions. As you know, we have long rejected the congestion reduction metric pushed by the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, which is simplistic and not achievable. It favors road expansion by ignoring the problem of induced demand. What we've seen in this crisis is that the dramatic drop in driving has contributed to a dramatic drop in ozone and particulate air pollution, the very pollution which has contributed to respiratory illness, in particular in the communities of color. The pollution has been found by Harvard researchers to contribute to higher incidence of COVID-19 illness and death. No one wishes the economic crisis we are facing, but among the things we have learned is that we should be doing all we can to slash pollution from riding, take that off, and looking ahead to slashing greenhouse gas emissions from transportation. We've also seen the demand to walk and bike for help, stress reduction, and travel to work for essential workers. Yet people are finding sidewalks are too narrow or missing, lack of safety, and too much space is given over to vehicles. We've also seen explosion in tail community. Percentage of tail communities that this crisis likely remain high in big departments and big tower committing further eliminating justification for national highway light. We've also seen where the real essential workers are in our workforce and the chances to compete in living and doing homework. For these reasons, we urge you to make a fundamental shift. Dating regional highway studies should be focused on maintaining what we've already built. We should be funding, shifting funding to transit operations in the capital, local street networks, and redesigning our overly wide routes to take and bypass the congestion infrastructure to support transitor activities. Above all elected officials, you must focus issue development in transitor activities and stop approving development that is overwhelming and auto-dependent. Moreover, you should be making, providing affordable housing and expanding jobs a top priority. Developing especially affordable housing and your training jobs is the number one thing you can do to address traffic, reduce pollution, and slash greenhouse gas. Thank you very much, Ms. Appley.
Mr. Schwartz, before you hang up, did you say you sent us an email that details everything you just spoke about?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, because I'd like to see those. All right. So we're going to try Ms. Land again, maybe third time's a charm. We doubt the wrong numbers. We're going to go back one more time to Susan Land.
Ms. Land, this is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you for providing testimony tonight. You are connected to the Authority members at the public hearing. They're on mute. They can hear you, but you would not be able to hear them. Please introduce yourself and give your location and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Susan Land and I'm from Arlington and my comments are in reference to the project NOV002 Arlington W&amp;O&amp;D Trail Enhancement. I am speaking tonight as a representative of the Arlington Tree Action Group. Our organization has great concerns about the number of publicly-owned mature trees that could be damaged or removed for this trail widening project. A particular concern are the following areas. Mile 5, Brandymore Castle Hill. Hundreds of large mature trees cover the Brandymore Castle Hill, several of which are also lined the bike path. Mile 3.75 is Bonner Park. The majority of this park exists in both a flood plain and a resource protection area. Large trees surround the banks of former Alren Creek. Mile 3.5 is Bluemont Park. This park also resides in a flood plain and has a designated resource protection area that crosses the existing bike trail. The risk of flooding here due to tree loss and the increased paved surfaces is enormous. Even if trees are not directly in the 22-foot right-of-way for this expanded bike trail, adjacent trees will certainly be damaged or destroyed by construction, cutting into their root systems, construction equipment, movement, and staging, and the requisite clearing and mowing that may reach up to three feet beyond the new paved area. Before this project is approved, we are asking that Northern Virginia Transportation Authority insists that Northern Virginia parks do the following. One, conduct a full environmental assessment, including a tree survey. The tree survey should list the number of mature trees to be removed for this project and the impact that will have on stormwater management. Two, identify what percentage of the construction and land disturbance will be in a designated resource protection area or a FEMA identified flood zone and make that number known to the public. Number three, meet with all the relatives Arlington, relevant Arlington County commissions, including the Urban Forestry Commission, the Environment and Energy Conservation Commission, and the Natural Resources Joint Advisory Group to get their feedback before design work begins. Both Bluemont and Bonner Parks were acquired by Arlington County specifically because they are in flood zones and must be preserved to absorb and contain floodwaters. We ask that Northern Virginia Transportation Authority do not fund this project until the environmental impacts of those projects are carefully reviewed and because hundreds of mature publicly-owned trees could be removed as a result. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to go now to Rick Epstein.
Mr. Epstein, this is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Good evening Keith, how are you?
Well, thank you. How are you?
Very well.
You are connected to the Authority members at the public hearing. They are on mute, but they can hear you. You would not be able to hear them, but they can hear you. Please introduce yourself, your location, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Fantastic. Good evening. My name is Rick Epstein. I live in Arlington and I'm speaking on Project NOV-002 Arlington W&amp;O&amp;D Trail Enhancements. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments this evening. I'm a longtime user of the W&amp;O&amp;D Trail and I'm asking you to reject Nova Parks' funding request for at least the following reasons. This project will potentially change a recreational trail in a natural regional park into primarily a commuting route when the primary mission of Nova Parks is conservation of regional natural resources. I believe an overwhelming majority of trail users are still unaware of this proposed dramatic widening of the trail. The reason is simple. Nova Parks has failed to hold any meaningful community engagement process regarding this project. Among the results of that failure are Nova Parks' application asserts multiple transportation benefits, but fails to adequately substantiate those benefits, including as to any increased trail usage resulting from this project. Nova Parks has failed to provide to the public an upfront assessment of the negative environmental impact from a new trail with a width beyond that of some residential streets, including loss of almost two acres of natural areas in close proximity to four mile run with areas of its RPA and flood plain. An upfront public process should have included an assessment of potentially less environmentally destructive and possibly less expensive alternatives, such as use of the existing trail in conjunction with Arlington's already existing, parallel paved four-mile run trail during periods of peak usage. And Nova Parks has failed to provide an assessment of either current safety issues on the trail or safety problems the widened trail itself may create from increased bicycle speeds and potential volumes in areas immediately next to pedestrians. These and other issues should have been fully discussed with our community before submission of this application. Finally, it seems highly unlikely, including based on prior community experience with Nova Parks, that any public engagement process held after receiving funding will be either fully objective or reflect a complete willingness to consider major changes. In conclusion, I'm respectfully asking to deny Nova Parks' funding request in this round as premature. Hopefully this will prompt Nova Parks to now implement an adequate public engagement process so that we as a community can address the issues identified above, among others, and determine an appropriate approach with substantial community support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. Have a good evening.
Good night now.
Good night.
Our next speaker is David Pala.
Mr. Pala, this is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Oh hey, how are you doing?
Well, thank you. You are connected to the Authority for this evening's public hearing. The Authority members can hear you, but they're on mute, so you won't be able to hear them. Please introduce yourself and your location and you have three minutes. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much. I really appreciate this opportunity to speak before all of you. My name is David Pala and I live in Prince William County, Virginia. And I just think it's really important that we broaden Route 1 through the town of Dumfries because this is the place that I've worked on various projects, contracts over the last 60 years. And I've developed a good relationship with the people living there and with the elected officials. And I know that this is part of a much larger vision for the town of Dumfries to ensure that they're able to revitalize and really give these people a sense of dignity. I'm sure as you all know, in all the paperwork leading up to this, that Route 1 really narrowed through the town of Dumfries. And I know that this will be a project that will help the flow, not only of traffic, but also of commerce to the area. So while you're looking and prioritizing these different projects, I would just really implore you to please prioritize Dumfries and to make sure that this is part of a larger plan for not only Dumfries, but obviously the region with all the improvements throughout one, both north and south of the town of Dumfries. So that's really what I wanted to say, just coming from as someone in this community and someone who has worked there and spent a lot of time there. I know this is something that a lot of the people in the community, you know, have been hoping for, for a long time now. And I would really just hope that you all would do this. I think especially with rozzies and other plant economic development happening in areas that's going to increase traffic into the town of Dumfries. And the best thing to do to help with that would be to make it just a little bit safer by widening the road. So that's really what I have to say.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Pala. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you do the same.
All right, our next speaker will be John Wingard.
Yes.
This is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Oh yeah.
You are connected to the Authority's public hearing.
Oh, right.
The Authority members can hear you, but they are on mute, so you will not be able to hear them. But please introduce yourself, identify your location, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
It won't take three minutes, but hello, my name is John Wingard. I live in Cherrydale, 465 North 22nd Street. I'm familiar with the W&amp;O, W&amp;D Trail. In my experience, it is not busy. It is adequately wide. People can pass each other going in each direction without any problem. I see absolutely no reason for an ex-dramatic widening with all the environmental issues that it will cause. I don't think there's been adequate study of the need for this proposal. I don't think the environmental consequences are warranted, they're out of proportion to the benefits. There's a parallel trail. If it does get busy, that pedestrians can use for Mal Run Trail. This is just Empire Building by Nova Parks. I think they don't have enough to do or something. I don't understand. So I am seriously opposed to the proposal. I don't think it's adequately based on the facts. It's not warranted, it's out of proportion in terms of environmental degradation versus the benefits. That's about it and thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, our next question is Duke Banks. I mean, our next person is Duke Banks. What did I say?
Yes.
Yes, this is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Right, fair enough.
You are connected to the Authority's public hearing. The Authority members can hear you, but they're on mute, so you will not be able to hear them. But please introduce yourself and your location and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Duke Banks. I'm from Arlington and I'm here to speak in opposition to Project NOVA 002, the Arlington W&amp;O&amp;D Trail Enhancement. But first of all, I want to call out Chairman Randall for her efforts in these very trying circumstances. And also a shout out to Katie Crystal, who is our board member, and also Mary Heinz, who's from Arlington here, who did all commendable service for Arlington County. But I want to kind of remind the Authority that last November, the Arlington County Board voted on a resolution supportive of NOVA to seek this grant of $5.6 million. And Ms. Crystal can give you some more background based on the comments that I'll be making.
here. But before the vote, there was considerable public outcry at that meeting concerning the project because of lack of specificity and lack of public engagement. Several county commissions, including Park and Recreation, Urban Forestry, and E2C2, spoke against the resolution for the reasons mentioned. A transportation committee weighed in favor of the resolution, excuse me, the transportation commission, but they raved in favor, but with a severe chastisement of Nova because of its lack of transparency and poor public engagement processes. In conversation between board members considering the resolution, there was discussion of these funds could be used to study the term environmental impacts in consideration of other options that were mentioned at the meeting, including what was already mentioned tonight by others, the existing Four Mile Run Trail that's operated by the Arlington Parks. County staff and Paul Gilbert of Nova gave assurances that the monies would be used to study these alternatives, plus having a robust public engagement. However, review of the two-page summary provided to you concerning this project, there are some significant information gaps. While the project narrative speaks about the engineering benefits of the project, there's no mention of the need for an environmental assessment or concerns expressed by Arlingtonians back in November. There is no mention of requiring Nova to undertake a robust public engagement process as a conditionality on possible receiving these grant funds. Likewise, there's no mention that the funds would be used for studies to determine data-driven solutions, scoping out alternatives, et cetera. Funds are only designated for design, engineering, and environmental work, plus construction costs. Page two of the summary doesn't even have a checkmark for a study project, yet that was the biggest thing that most Ardentonians wanted. In review of your frequently asked questions, it specifically mentions that NVTA prefers eligible applicants to fund their own studies to evaluate concepts and determine eligibility. My interpretation of this phrase means that notwithstanding all the assurances provided by Nova and the county staff, it appears unlikely these funds can be used to finance a study as understood by Arlington County Board. For this reason, I recommend that the project not be funded at this time. Thank you for your consideration, and best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Thank you. Our next speaker is Charles Grimes. Mr. Wood, while they're getting Mr. Grimes on the phone, Derek, I'm gonna need you to bring me some food, because Monica has not fed us at all in here. Just go let you know.
This is Charlie Grimes.
Mr. Grimes, good evening. This is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Yes, welcome. I'm ready to give my three minutes.
Okay, excellent. You are connected to the authority. They are all on mute, so they can hear you, but you will not be able to hear them. Please, if you would, introduce yourself and your location, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Charlie Grimes with the Prince William Conservation Alliance. I'm in Prince William County. We are one of the groups who are advocates for a blueprint for a better region, transportation projects that will improve the quality of life in every area, particularly mobility-related projects related to moving people more than cars, facilitating people getting around today on trails, which are congested at the moment as much as our roads are. I'd also like to speak in support of the Route One project at Dumfries. It's an opportunity for us to create, with the small area planning at Dumfries, a new community that meets what people in that area want to see the town become. Not many opportunities allow us to do this, and one of our opportunities right now is to combine our land use planning with our transportation planning. NVTA is only looking really at the transportation side of this equation. We need to improve our process of funding our transportation infrastructure to ensure we get the results we want. We visualize 2045. We want to achieve live-work-play communities with our transportation investments. That's only going to happen if we pay closer attention to our land use planning along with our transportation planning. The small area plan at Dumfries provides us that opportunity. NVTA would be improving the process if in the next cycle, over the next two years, you paid more attention to how the transportation is connected to land use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes.
Mr. Grimes, our next speaker is David Miles.
Hello?
Mr. Miles, this is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Okay, guys, waiting for your call. I was about to give it up.
Oh, thank you for your patience. You are connected to the authority at the public hearing. The authority members can hear you, but they're on mute, so you will not be able to hear them. But please introduce yourself and your location, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, my name is David Miles. I live 2532 Sedgwick Place, Dumfries, Virginia. And this is about the widening of Route One, correct?
Yes, sir. Please, please continue.
Okay. Yeah, it's not just that I'm for the widening of Route One, but we need the widening of Route One. Traffic has continually gotten worse and worse, and a ride that used to take a couple of minutes can now take 15, 20 minutes and even longer because of the bottleneck. And I really want to support that. There's times even when I'm going to and from work, it shouldn't take me no more than 20 minutes to get to my job, but sometimes it takes me close to 45 minutes to an hour. It's just a big hassle when you gotta sit in traffic and you inch and inch and inch. I just really want to support and hope that Route One does get widened. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Miles.
Joshua Handler is our next speaker.
Yes, this is Josh Handler.
Mr. Handler, good evening. This is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Can you hear me okay, Keith?
I can hear you fine, and so can the authority members. They are on mute, so you won't hear them, but they can hear you. Please introduce yourself, your location, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. My name is Joshua Handler. I live in Arlington, next to Nova Parks, Upton Hill Regional Park, and near the W N O D Trail. I'm speaking against funding that NOV 002 Arlington W N O D Trail Enhancement project. The project would have numerous negative environmental impacts and is unneeded in terms of helping bikers or pedestrians commute or alleviating pressure on our roadways during rush hour by facilitating alternate modes of transportation. After reviewing the project's description, I concluded it would involve significant tree loss and destruction of mature trees near the East Falls Church Metro at the North Roosevelt Street entrance in the Brandymore Castle Hill area. Other trees would be lost along the trail in other parts. The trail widening, in effect, is creating the quill of a regular road right next to Four Mile Run. This is dangerous and unneeded. The construction of this trail would create runoff and erosion, harming the stream, plus ultimately the bay. When the project is completed, the additional impervious surface would add to the runoff and flooding, which is already a major problem in the area, as Ms. Crystal knows. The widened trail is unneeded in terms of capacity. I walked the trail frequently this winter and spring from my home to the East Falls Church Metro to commute to work before COVID hit. In the colder months, there were a handful of cyclists. As the weather warmed, there were several dozen along the 40 minutes it took me to walk the two miles. There is a parallel trail for most of the length of the proposed widening project on the south side of Four Mile Run. Between the two trails, there's plenty of capacity during the commuting hours. I did not observe any congestion. A friend of mine commutes from his home in Vienna to DC for work along the trail. I asked him about trail capacity. He said it was fine. The main issue was an occasional dog walker who lets the leash out too much. Frankly, there needs to be more of a public education campaign to urge walkers to use the Arlington County Trail during commuting hours, the one south of Four Mile Run. We should not waste our taxpayer dollars on an unneeded and environmentally dangerous project. I urge you not to fund this project, and I will be sending you my comments and additional information by email. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Handler, for your testimony. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Willie Tony.
Hello, Mr. Tony?
Yes?
Hi, good evening. This is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Well, good afternoon. Good evening.
Good evening. You are connected to the public hearing. The authority members can hear you, but they are on mute, so you will not be able to hear them. But please introduce yourself and your location, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. First of all, let me thank the committee members for allowing me the opportunity to speak on this matter. My name is Willie James Tony. I have resided in the Northern Virginia area for approximately 30 years. I've resided in Dumfries for the last 22 years. I've been here through the sleepy and the slow times. I've watched the housing development boom east and west of Route One, and I've watched how the roads become saturated morning and afternoons. We're locked daily as the current state. We need relief, and we are asking the committee to please fully fund the Dumfries Road project. Road improvement north and south of Dumfries has caused a bottleneck. We need relief. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak on this matter.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Tony. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Tony, that was 56 seconds. All right. Kara Pytek would be next.
Hello?
Hello, Mrs. Pytek? This is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. How are you?
Doing well, thanks.
Good. You are connected to the authority members at their public hearing this evening. They can hear you. You will not be able to hear them because they're all on mute. But please introduce yourself and your location, and you have three minutes.
Oh, hi. My name is Kara Pytek. I live in Manas, Virginia, right along 234. And all I really wanted to say about the Route One widening project is that traffic is already still congested in the area, especially during rush hour and on the weekend, and we desperately need to keep up with infrastructure planning to support the exponential growth of our area. This is a quality of life issue for so many people, and I think this would be a great benefit to the area to widen Route One.
Okay, thank you very much for your testimony. Have a good evening.
Thanks. Thank you, you too.
That was a new record at 32 seconds. All right, Melissa McMahon is next.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, Ms. McMahon? This is Keith.
Yes, that's me.
This is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Hi, Keith. Give me one.
Hi, how are you? Good. You are connected to the authority members at their public hearing this evening. They can hear you. You'll be unable to hear them because they're on mute. But please introduce yourself and your location, and you have three minutes.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Melissa McMahon. I am the Chair of the Alexandria Transportation Commission. Thanks for the opportunity to speak about the city's application. The City of Alexandria has submitted one project for your support, requesting $75 million toward the construction of the Duke Street Transitway. The Duke Street Transitway is one of three planned transit ways included in the city's master plan. The city has been taking steps to implement all three of these transit ways, which are vital to improving the regional mobility, reducing congestion, and connecting major employment hubs, transit centers, metro rail, and activity centers. The Route One Metro Way, which connects Old Town to Crystal City, has been in operation since 2014, and ridership has continued to grow since its inception. The city will begin design on the West End Transitway later this year and anticipates it operating by 2028. Once completed, it will provide frequent and reliable service between the city's West End and the Pentagon. In 2018, the city received $12 million for the planning and design of the Duke Street Transitway project as part of the NVTA FY 2018 to 2023 program. We appreciate NVTA's commitment toward this project as it will improve connectivity, speed, and reliability on one of the city's highest-used transit corridors. Today, this corridor has an average weekday ridership over 5,000 riders, which could grow significantly with improved service. The city has started the planning process for the Duke Street Transitway this year. The city would use NVTA funds to purchase buses and to build stations, two jump lanes, signal and intersection improvements, and pedestrian and bicycle improvements for safe access to the station. The Duke Street Transitway will advance NVTA's two overarching goals of reducing congestion and moving the greatest number of people in the most cost-effective manner, while addressing equity, access, and other regional goals. By improving transit service, frequency, and reliability between the King Street Metro Rail Station and the planned redevelopment of the Landmark Mall, this project will benefit areas of existing high-density and lower-income minority and senior populations, while enabling more sustainable development at Landmark Mall. In addition, the project will offer safety benefits in a high-crash corridor. All three of these transit ways work together to form spines of connectivity for both the city and the region, connecting people to jobs, housing, services, and entertainment. Funding for the Duke Street Transitway will allow the city to complete this transitway network, and receiving this full funding request for FY 2425 will enable a streamlined design and construction effort for faster implementation and maximum cost-effectiveness. Again, thanks for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the city in this important project.
Thanks, Ms. McMahon. Have a great evening.
You too.
Thank you. Bye.
All right, we have four more speakers. Next one is Fred Hussein of Virginia Douglas.
Hello?
Mr. Hussein?
Yes?
This is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Yes, yes, how are you doing tonight?
I'm well, thank you. You are connected to the authority members at their public hearing. They can hear you, but you can't hear them. But please, if you would, introduce yourself and your location, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity here. My name is Fred Hussein. I'm calling from Dumfries, and I wanted to talk about two projects there, but given the time constraints, I'm going to focus on one. I'm talking about P W C 019, the Route One widening project. I know there was another caller talking about that, and I want to build additional case on this project here. I live not far from Dumfries. I live not far from the town itself there, and I believe this project will have a significance in town to really kind of boost economically, especially try to attract new businesses there, bringing tax revenue, and also bringing a sense of community. And the reason I wanted to mention about sense of community is that I went to the Christmas parade last year, and it was kind of a burden to ask Vida to open up the South Island Route One and then just shut it down temporarily. It just didn't feel a sense of community. I wanted to have some sense of community to really have the town of Dumfries own that street, that South Island, and create a sense of community and attract some cultural activities down the road there. So that's something that I really wanted to push forward there, too. And also bring, you know, have the small business to be established on that segment there. That's something I really want to push forward there. In addition, it's become to my attention that the Rosie Scaring Department has been given the green light by the town. And I believe that having the traffic on the main route, on the existing northbound lanes, it'll be better suited to have both directions to accommodate additional capacity for visitors trying to travel to visitors trying to travel to visit the gaming site there and also attract new commercial development on that corridor, the existing northbound lane. So I believe that's really happens there. That's valuable. And one more thing, Supervisor Amanda Bailey, who represents the Potomac District, and that district, the Potomac District, she wants to bring new businesses there to kind of bring more local economic activity. So this is a very vital aspect there. And that's what I'm trying to push for there. And I hope that this project will help generate support from the county and bring some more businesses there and really help attract more residents around that Dumfries area. So I ask you to fully fund the construction aspect of widening Route One. And I just want to say thank you again for the opportunity, and I hope you all be safe, and hopefully this project will move forward in this coming decade. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Hussein. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye.
Virginia Douglas is next.
Hello?
Hello, Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
This is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Yes, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. How are you?
Well, thank you.
Good. You are connected to the authority members at their public hearing this evening. They can hear you, but they're on mute, so you will be unable to hear them. But please, please introduce yourself and your location, and you have three minutes.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Virginia Douglas. I'm a current resident of Woodbridge, Virginia, and I would like to address the town of Dumfries' Route One widening project. As a Princeville County resident of 25 years, 20 of which in Dumfries, I'm personally invested in and am passionate about the growth and progression of Dumfries and the quality of life for its residents. Over the past 25 years, I've had the pleasure of watching Princeville County, Dumfries in particular, grow, but have also experienced the angst with the congestion and crowding on a daily basis, making me dread visiting my relatives or running errands. With the growth in Dumfries and around Dumfries, 95 traffic overflows to Route One. While it may save time for commuters, it creates nightmares for local residents as Route One is primary road on which is being crowded by the capacity that the road simply can't handle. Increasing funding will enable road widening to reduce congestion and the angst, enable development of Main Street, and in doing so, funding for Route One will promote economic development by way of job opportunities and close proximity for its residents, allowing our town's people to work closer to home, which will also mean less congestion. In summary, Route One funding is an investment that makes sense, that the town of Dumfries needs, and that its residents deserve. So thank you again for this opportunity to speak and hopefully look forward to the growth and development of the town of Dumfries and Route One.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. We have two more speakers. We have Gertrude Jones. And you know what? I actually should have called Ms. Bailey first because I usually try to call elected officials first. But we have Gertrude Jones and Andrea Bailey, who's on the Princeville County Board Supervisors. Have Andrea Bailey?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, is this Supervisor Bailey?
It is.
Hi, good evening. This is Keith Jasper from the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Hi, Keith. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. How are you?
I'm wonderful. Been waiting for your call.
I'm sorry to keep you waiting. You are connected to the authority members at this evening's public hearing. They can hear you, but they're currently muted, so you will not be able to hear them. So please introduce yourself and your location, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to say good evening to Chair Randall and Vice Chair Parrish and to my chair, Chair Wheeler. Thank you so much for this opportunity and to the esteemed group that's gathered there today to hear my plea. I want to say thank you very much for having this on your agenda tonight. It is a very, very important agenda item to discuss. I am 100% in support of this project. Why am I in support of it? Because I look for the opportunity to work with the great mayor of Dumfries, Virginia. This is an opportunity that will give the constituents free rein in going in and out of their community, not having the stress and strain of commuting back and forth to their jobs, healing people's minds in terms of mental health because when you're on the road all the time, it affects the stress levels and the quality of life within our community. And so I just want to have this opportunity to offer a plea, a plea for this project to move forward. It will give Dumfries the prominent place that it should have within the Potomac District. It resides in my district, the Potomac District. And I look forward to enhancing the historical sites. I look forward to enhancing parks and recreation. I look forward to the better quality of life that we can provide by just simply widening Route One. So I thank you. I thank you for having this on your agenda. I thank you for the future of passing this on the agenda. I thank you for this opportunity. You will not go wrong in passing this project. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you, Supervisor Bailey. Have a good evening.
There was one person. Who was it?
Tanya James.
Keith, do you want to call back Tanya James?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Your call has been forwarded.
She had two shots at that. We're not going to call Mrs. James back a third time, but thank you very much. Okay. Authority member, that is everybody. So we are going to take a break because we literally have to do some things as far as moving around to start the authority meeting. And the staff needs some time to reconnect from one line and connect to the other line. So let's take... Hi, Katie! Let's take a 10-minute break. What time is it? It's 9:00. Let's gather back at 9:10. And I'll talk to Monica about the agenda from here on. Okay. I'm sorry, let's gather back at 9:20. Let's gather back at 9:20. Thank you.